About death, right?
And this, and they're putting the monitor for the school and the church purposes.
Because I just don't worry about it, start trying to get business stuff around there. There's a business on the side, right in that street.
Start about one minute, that's okay with everybody?
Um, it's a business right there in this, um, they just jumped up and everything.
So we need code enforcement out there, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's only for.
I think so.
Business, because I guess they wouldn't have.
Because the, uh.
But.
No, it wouldn't, that's not always necessary.
Maybe you do this, Jim, I do like painting bodywork, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Gotcha, gotcha. Somebody sign up, okay.
To go ahead and grandfather some people. I'm changing for others, maybe.
If everyone's ready, we'll go ahead and start. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, October 12th, 2020, regular scheduled meeting. First, I have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, now down to invocation, Councilmember Gilbert.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you, giving thanks for this opportunity, Lord, God, to serve your people. We ask right now, Lord God, that you give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of you, what you will have us to do. Father, we just pray for togetherness. We pray that, Lord God, that we put aside of our differences as we try to move this county forward. Father, we just thank you for everyone that's under the sound of my voice. We ask right now, Lord, that you forgive us for our sins. Thus I pray in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, is that Mr. Trapp sign up? Alright, now down to the approve. Alright, Mr. Trapp available. The approval of the meeting of September, if it's okay with everyone, I'll do all three same. Regular meeting, September 14th, 2020, uh, special meeting, October 5th, 2020, and special meeting, October 7th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second, any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor, approval of the said three meetings, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to public's hearing, we do have three public hearings. Item A is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement between Fairfield County and Project Windsor to provide certain incentives, authorizing the sale of certain real property in the county and other related matters. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing up at 6:02. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
Alright, if no one signed to speak, um, I guess I will just say it's a great thing and I'm happy that we were able to sign that, that, uh, contract. We'll go ahead and close that public hearing at 6:03. Item B, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B1 Limited Business District of 1.6 acres owned by Rockton Baptist Church, the applicant. This is tax map number 145-01-35-002-000. This property is located between Crane Street, Winter Street, and Sanford Road, located in Winsboro, South Carolina, 29180. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing up at 6:03. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
If no one signed to speak, we'll go ahead and close this at 6:03 also. Now down to item C, public hearing, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD Rural Residential District of 17.61 acres owned by Yvonne Bascuriso, the applicant. This is tax map number 093-00-00-031-000. This property is located at 8393 US Highway 21 North, located in Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing up at 6:04. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
No one signed to speak, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing up at 6:04. Now down to I.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Ms.
On all three of these public hearings, I just want to make sure it's put on record that all three of them was probably notified, um, and notification was given for all three of these hearings.
That is correct.
They were.
They were publicly here, that's, okay, thank you. Now down to item seven, ordinances, resolutions, and orders, we have I think that's five for tonight. Item A, third and final reading, ordinance number 754, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement between Fairfield County and Project Windsor to provide certain incentives, authorizing the sale of certain real property in the county and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
We are not, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly, second it, uh, any discussion from council? If no discussion from council, I guess we can just get a brief for public knowledge from administration?
Yes, and I will have, Todd Davenport, uh, comment on this also. This has been publicly announced now, so we can move beyond just the project name. Project Windsor is what we have used throughout, uh, the process with council. It is, uh, now known that this is Old Castle. Uh, it is a construction products company primarily dealing in making cement block, pavers, and things such as that. They will hire, uh, almost a hundred people, uh, at, at very high wages in comparison to some of our other companies that we have here in the county. Uh, they will be purchasing the spec building that the county has, paying 2.2 million dollars for that spec building. Uh, we will be entering into an incentive agreement which this ordinance, um, also authorizes, which is a fee-in-lua type agreement with what's called an SSRC accompanying, um.
Mr. Davenport.
I, I think you hit most of them. The stated points, um, like I said, uh, 25 million dollars, almost 26 million dollars, a hundred, roughly a hundred people, and the, the wages are, are very solid, this is a, this is a, an excellent company. I believe they're the largest company in Ireland, it's an Irish-based company. So we're, we're excited about them, we're excited about selling the spec building, um, and, uh, we're gonna move on and hopefully do another one soon, but.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Paul.
I just want to say, uh, thank you to Mr. Davenport, thank you to Mr. Hodges, and everybody else that was involved in making this happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell.
Could we, could we talk about, and, and if, if it's not, um, if we just can't do it, that's okay, but can we talk about the, the wages? Because this is gonna be one of, um, the, one of the highest paying.
Put it in the mic, put, put it in the mic.
This is, this will be one of the highest paying employers we have in the, in the county, but can you mention that at all?
I mean, I think we talk about the wages, and again, when we do one of these incentive packages, we take into consideration things such as the investment, the 26 million dollars, and, and the wage rate also. So Todd, if you would, talk about that.
Yes, so the, to start off, the, uh, their, um, the health package and that sort of thing is very competitive, um, and a large company, quality company like these typically do have really good programs, so we're pleased with that. I think the, kind of the base, uh, the entry level, uh, wages, it'll, will be, um, uh, somewhere between 18 and 20 dollars, and out of the hundred people, only, I believe between 10 or 15 of them are at that level, everybody else is above that. So, uh, so, you know, goes up to the class managers.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure, if we could, let's share that with the public, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Anyone else? No one else, uh, I'll take a vote, all those in favor of third and final reading of ordinance number 754, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to third and final reading, ordinance number 755, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B1 Limited Business District of 1.6 acres owned by Rockton Baptist Church, the applicant. This is tax map number 145-01-35-002-000. This property is located on Crane Creek, oh, I'm sorry, between Crane Creek, Winter Street, and Sanford Road in Winsboro, South Carolina, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved improperly, second. Discussion from council, if no discussion from council, can we just get a brief, uh, explanation for public knowledge from, uh, Mr. Clausen, please?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Um, again, this is the, uh, Rockton Baptist Church, they are intending on using the property where the fire station is at, uh, and adding some, some portables, um, some modular buildings, uh, for the school purpose, um, I guess as well as theirs. I think they're gonna do like Sunday School, uh, out of those buildings as well. Um, the R2 would not allow for those two separate uses, so they did have to rezone to a B1 to allow for two primary uses. Are there any questions, comments?
Anything from council?
Well, all, everybody in, around there was notified that this was happening, so I think that's a good go.
Yes, sir, Planning Commission receives, um, we do a, we do a public meeting with the Planning Commission, and then we send out letters that are non-certified for that hearing, and then for, uh, the councils, we send out certified letters, and, uh, again, that's, that's the public hearing with the notice going out as well.
Mr. Paul?
I'm here.
Okay. No further questions, uh, I'll take a vote, all those in favor of passing ordinance number 755, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item C, third and final reading, ordinance number 756, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD1 Rural Residential District of 17.61 acres owned by Yvonne Bascuriso, the applicant. This is tax map number 093-00-00-031-000. This property is located at 8393 US Highway 21 North in Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second it, all those, I'm sorry, for discussion, uh, Mr. Clausen, just for public knowledge also?
Yes, sir. Again, this is the, the rezoning of the property, uh, from R1, where it does not allow for a, um, an accessory use, like a, in this case, a, a small shed, uh, to be placed on the property without a primary residence or a primary structure. Uh, so RD1 would allow for that. Um, we did, again, as discussed last time, we did have a comment from the public during the Planning Commission public meeting, uh, and they were concerned about density, uh, again, RD1 actually would be less dense, you can only have one per acre. R1 is, is significantly more than that. So, um, this did pass, and as did the other, I forgot to mention, this did pass, um, six to zero, uh, with the Planning Commission.
Anything from council? Nothing from council, uh, entertain a vote, all those in favor of, uh, ordinance number 756, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item D, first reading by title only, um, ordinance number 758, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from I1 Industrial District to B2 General Business District of 8.38 acres owned by Aguado and Wanda Juettas applicants. This is tax map number 184-00-00-111-000. This property is located at 3103 East Peach Road in Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130. As you guys are aware, we don't discuss, uh, uh, first readings by title, but, uh, do I have?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly, second, as you guys know, no discussion, uh, to second reading, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item E, first reading by title only, ordinance number 759, an ordinance setting the mileage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second, and once again, there is no discussion. Um, I'll entertain a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Boarding, now, down to item eight, boarding commission minutes, each council member should have received, um, if, uh, minutes from the hospital board and Board of Disabilities. Does council have any questions in reference to it? If not, down to boarding commission appointments. We have a reappointment of Mrs. Barbara P. Charles, the Assessment Appeal Board representing District 4, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second it, any discussion from council? No discuss.
No discussion, um, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Barbara Charles for, um, accepting that position again, and I wish you the best and anything I can do to help her, please let me know.
Alright, thank you for that, Trey Goines. At this time, I'll take a vote, all those in favor of reappointing Ms. Barbara P. Charles, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, item B is a term extension for Mr. Randy Kelly, Planning Commission for District 2. This will be a one-year term extension, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second it, any discussion from council?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, it, it, um, you mentioned this is gonna be a one-year term, why you mention that?
This will be a one-year extension.
An extension.
Okay, just, just an extension to his term?
An extension, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? If no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, there is no old or new business, now down to our county administrators, report, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, the first item we have tonight is an update, uh, from, we have representatives from Duke Energy here tonight to give us an update on the park that they're building on Lake Watery. I hear it's turn, it, they presented the plans earlier on when it was being proposed, uh, but I know they're well into construction now. Um, our attorney tells me it looks beautiful from the lakeside, he's gone out several times and looked at it, uh, and I've ridden out with Councilman Bell and Councilman Douglas at times to look at it also. But again, they're here tonight to give a presentation on, on, um, the construction, the progress, and the potential opening date, I hope.
Yes, sir, thank you, Jason, can y'all hear me okay, council?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Chairman and, and council members, we appreciate the opportunity to come down and, and update you on the recreation enhancements that are planned for Lake Watery, uh, and specifically those in Fairfield County. I think probably, just to get everybody on, on the same plane here, is to how we got to here today, is why are we making these recreational improvements? Uh, these enhancements were results of commitments made in the, in the Catawba Water Rehydro project comprehensive licensing agreement, which was signed by about seven, 70 signatories back in 2006. Finally got around to issuing a license which had the recreation commitments, including those here in Fairfield County, and issued license in November 2015. Uh, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, um, required us to develop a recreation management plan that details all the recreation enhancements that we're doing, and that's from Lake James all the way down to Lake Watery, some 89 recreation-related commitments. That was a pretty detailed report, about a hundred pages, um, the, uh, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission subsequently approved that after we submitted it in 2016 and 2017. As I mentioned, it details, that plan is very detailed of what we're gonna build, construction timelines, and operations, and management, and then future recreation studies. And our, our, um, construction projects are in five-year increments for 20 years, and we've got, uh, three that are being done on Lake Watery in Fairfield County in the first five years. That's 2018 to 2022, then another one in the second five years, and then another one, I think, in the third, uh, five years. Uh, we're legally bound by the, the operating license, the Recreation Management Plan, and that comprehensive relicensing agreement to implement the plans. And, um, you can see, we, we balanced, uh, the recreational interest with other, uh, interests, including hydro operations, lake levels, and other things, uh, to, to get the recreation commitments. So here on Lake Watery, um, Watery Creek access area, we constructed that, I don't know if anybody's been by there, we completed it last year, it's open for the public, uh, and I'll talk about the amenities there. Molly Creek is a new access area, is, as Jason mentioned, about a hundred acres, and that's currently under construction, I'll talk to you about it in just a minute. Colonel's Creek access area, which we will begin, uh, we're underway with engineering design, um, is, will be in the plans. Taylor's Creek, and then Lugolf, uh, of course Lugolf is in, uh, Kershaw County. So Watery Creek, uh, we installed a fishing pier, a picnic facility, restrooms, and, and approximately 10 gravel parking spaces, and as I mentioned, that was completed and in service, um, at, early this year. For Molly Creek, for Molly Creek, um, as I mentioned, that's a hundred acres, as you know, if you've been out there, it has the peninsula with it, with the eye, uh, sort of peninsula, and then the mainland. Uh, we are, uh, going to install there the swimming area, paved parking, restrooms, trails, bank and pier fishing, picnic facilities, and trailer boat parking. We started construction in late, uh, 2019, it's ongoing now. Uh, we will have that completed, uh, I'm thinking in the late June to early July timeframe, when all the, all the recreation amenities will be in service. Uh, we had to receive, uh, a Corps of Engineers, uh, 404 permit to do the in-water work for like fishing pier, the swim beach, uh, and the boat ramps, we received that in mid-September, so now we, we're starting that work. Where we are now is, we've done all the, all the grading for the area, laid down the base coat for the parking, we're starting on the curbing for the parking, we've installed three restrooms, and then an attendant storage building, those are in, and we're just, uh, we're starting now on the swim beach and the picnic facilities. So after those are completed in the fall into the winter, we'll start on the fishing piers, the boat, um, dock, and boat ramps. And again, the target to have that completed is late June, early July, if the weather will cooperate us, and we don't get into a lot of wet weather.
You mind if we ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
You wanna wait till?
No, absolutely, please, I'd like to.
Once these things are completed, who's responsible for the upkeep, cleanliness, and everything that goes along with these projects?
For Watery Creek, we're, we're responsible for that one, lock, stock, and barrel. For Molly Creek, we're also responsible, but if, if you go to the next, um, excuse me, if you go to the next page, with the comprehensive licensing agreement, we are going to offer a commercial lease to a commercial operator to operate that, a facility, and if they do, then they have the opportunity to include a RV campground, a bath house, and a, and a marine pump-out, uh, station. We advertised that, uh, in the Camden Chronicle, I don't know if you saw it in late September, to date, we don't have any interested, uh, uh, people that are, firms that are interested in, in, in operating it, if, if they, they're responsible for that, and they can charge a fee. If we do not find anybody in terms of a commercial operator, those facilities that I mentioned on the mainland would not be built, and we would be responsible for all the, uh, maintenance and upkeep and operations of the facilities.
Mr. Crossfield.
Same thing with Colonel's Creek.
Right, I just, you know, my, my concern is people coming into the area and trashing it up and, and leaving it there for.
Yeah, and we'll.
An eyesore for everyone.
Well, we're gonna have an attendant on, on site two to three times a week, and that'll probably be on, on a week, a weekend day too, uh, to pick up trash, you know, monitor the conditions, and then, you know, we'll, we'll assess what needs to be tweaked in terms of management from that. So, I mean, we want to be a good neighbor, and we're just not gonna, you know, build it and, and walk away from it, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crossfield.
Yes, sir.
We discussed before, when you, uh, talked to us at the Watery Presbyterian Church, was the queue that was there that we talked about, um, the roads and stuff on Rockbridge Road, and then the Island Creek Road going to the site. Um, have you been able to, to talk to the DOT to see if they could maybe improve at Rockbridge Road?
We have not yet, but we will, we will be talking with them before we operate it.
Alright, thanks.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'm just, I'm just in awe, and I'm so grateful for the work that you're doing, and I hope people recognize, this is what it takes to build our county, and we're using a natural resource and what we have. And I'm just very appreciative, having had a chance to get out and take a look at it yet, but I definitely will do that. I want to say thank you so much for allowing Fairfield County to be a part of such an awesome project.
We appreciate those comments. I will say, when it's built, it, the county will see, have, will see a facility out there that they'll be proud of. We're, we're gonna do it first class. So any other questions about the commercial operator lease, was that clear of that condition? As far as Colonel's Creek, we are currently in the engineering design and permitting phase for that project. Uh, we expect to start construction in late April or May of next year. It'll go through next recreation season, and we anticipate the swim beach will be open during the recreation season of 2022. Now, this one, um, we're building a courtesy dock, swimming areas, restrooms, a picnic shelters, and additional paved parking to accommodate the swim beach. Uh, we will offer the county the opportunity to lease this through our Access Area Improvement Initiative Lease Program, uh, once we complete it. So, um, and Jason will be talking as we, as we get that completed of, of the county's, uh, interest in that. Uh, I think there's, you can't see it very good here, but there's an option, if the county does lease it, they could put some additional picnic tables, um, um, picnic facilities in there. Um, as far as Taylor's Creek, we, that will be completed in the second five, what's that, I'm sorry. That will be, um, constructed in the second five years and be completed by 2027. This is a currently like Molly Creek, a new site, it's near the Taylor's, Taylor's Creek access area. We will build a parking area for about 10 vehicles, and then a trail down to the lake's edge with a fishing trail for bank fishing opportunities. And then finally, Lugolf access area, which is in Kershaw County, uh, this is a real popular tail race fishing area, I'm sure y'all know all about it, and this year we had a lot of use. Uh, but we plan to put restrooms, improved gravel parking there in the wildlife viewing facilities. Uh, we will offer th, this lease to the Kershaw County, and they have opportunities to build, um, a canoe kayak launch, as well as a, uh, a picnic shelter if they, if they are interested in leasing, and again, that would be in the, in the third five-year period. So, um, that's our plans and where we are, and, um, I'll entertain any other questions, uh, that the council may have.
Mr. Bell.
Um, I don't have a question, um, but again, I wanna, wanna, um, um, come, um, compliment you on the, on the work that, um, that has already been done. And, um, you know, you, you appeared at our town hall, and again, I want to thank you for, for doing that. But, um, and also, um, um, the tools and all that you, you've given, so just want to make sure, I just want to say thanks. And, um, and that's gonna be a good asset to the county overall, appreciate it very much.
Definitely.
I'd like to thank you for improving the biggest part of my district. So, if you ever need anything, and need somebody local to help you do anything, be sure to give me a call.
Thank you.
I'd just say it definitely be an asset, and, uh, I'm, I'm wondering, can we upload this to our website to let the citizens know, would that be possible?
Your permission, I'd be glad to.
Would you guys permission?
That's fine, it's public nature.
Definitely.
Everything in there is in the recreation management plan that's been filed.
Awesome.
So there's nothing.
So it'd be nice to let the citizens know what the plans are, uh.
I agree.
So.
I'll do that.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, look forward to, look forward to. Look forward to, look forward to.
Next up, I'll have Ms. Johnson introduce our new Emergency Management Director. I think it's a familiar face.
Good evening. I want to welcome Mr. Brad Douglas as the new Emergency Management Director. He's a longtime resident of Fairfield County. He transferred into this position from the Sheriff's Office, where he has worked over 20 years. He als, he also has several years of supervisory and management experience. Brad, welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and this is beginning my second week, and I've already hit the ground running last week at a full sprint, so I really like working with the staff, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Anything from council? If not, I'll leave.
Thank you, Ms. Bertha.
Welcome.
If not, I'll just say, Doug, you know, we, we work with Brad at the Sheriff's Department, and he is one that gives it his, his all. I will say that. And he, he's someone that will make you proud, and I'm, I'm glad they were able to scoop you up, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
He can get it done, he's a Douglas.
Yes, sir, Ms. Paul.
I just wanted to say congratulations on your new, your new venture, and I know you're doing outstanding job over there.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Anything else from council? Welcome, Brad.
Thank you.
Again.
Next up, I want to give council an update on the forfeited land trust. I think as council's aware, that is something, a, the, all the properties in forfeited land trust have been accumulating for quite some time, and we really, I don't think have been doing that as we should have been doing that. We looked out for different models and, and ways to, to kind of clean up what we were doing with the fair, for, fair-forfeited land trust, if I can say that. And we chose to go the auction route, and put those properties up that had been sitting basically in a dead status, unproductive status, not, not useful to anyone, not paying taxes for many years. We put up, up for auction, so whoever wanted them could bid on them, and the results exceeded our, our greatest expectations. I'll let Mr. Jim Thompson kind of go over the results, what we yielded from that auction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm Jim Thompson, the agent for the, the agent for the Forfeited Land Commission. Of course, in the beginning, after some basic procedures, you know, were set, set in motion. This is a reoccurring cycle on the properties that come to the forfeited land, and of course, we just had to basically affect every possible outcome, and look at all the properties and all those things. Of course, the mission of the Forfeited Land Commission is to get things back on the tax roll as quickly as possible. One of the resources that I used from the very beginning were other counties who were already, you know, had been doing this, had, had already established ways of, you know, getting the properties out quickly and, and making the most money from the properties for the county. The use of an auction company, as, as Mr. Taylor said, you know, was one of the biggest success stories that I heard among all the other counties, because, as you're aware, an open bid auction is not only unbiased, but it is also, you're touching so many more people that want properties that, you know, aren't local, and, you know, just simply, they, they're just more people out there, and we touched more people. After the due diligence was over, I chose an auction company out of Greenville, South Carolina, and got approval from the commission. That auction company, the main reason that we chose them was, they were already being used by other counties. They already understood what, you know, needs and intricacies there were amongst county government, and they just had a very smooth process that they, you know, laid out to me. We just completed our first auction with them. We had about 68 properties that were in this initial auction. To, to date, it's gonna be, this kind of isolates back and forth daily because it's an auction. Some people might not come forward, or, you know, to pay, or whatever, but 58 of those properties were sold, which, that's about, I think, 86% of them, which was extraordinary. The ones that did not sell will simply go into the next auction and keep the cycle going. The properties that move to the Forfeited Land Commission from the past, you know, tax sale will come to us, and we'll be doing the same thing. If there are properties that don't sell, for whatever reason, they will be maybe lumped in with other nicer properties, and they will be, you know, it'll be a single bid for, for both of them, to try to get somebody owning these properties. The bottom line is that it's over $400,000, between $400 and $450,000 in proceeds that we will be receiving from, from this to pay the past taxes, the interest and penalties on these properties. It'll take a while to process, as you can imagine, that many closings. Is it actually, when, you know, someone has to be paid, and in this case, the auction company, they're paid by the buyer in a buyer's premium, but of course, anytime there's that case, by law, we're required to have actual closing. So that process is beginning right now, you know, to start. Once we settle the taxes and other ancillary expenses, we'll abate the years that really we shouldn't have been adding to those parcels, and, and then we'll clear that, you know, account out, and make sure that, you know, going forward, the person who owns it is, is made whole. I already mentioned this, using the auction company for this not only made the, the properties available on the world stage, but it removes any bias, and I think that's important to, to say again, because we have three elected officials on the commission. And, you know, it's important that they always maintain a, a separation of sorts from, from things like this, and it's, it's good that they are playing an active role as well. But I believe this is our first success story for the Forfeited Land Commission, and that's it.
Any questions from council?
You've mentioned that you auctioned them off, you had 10 left that you couldn't sell. Now, the reasons being, they didn't get bidded on, or we had legal difficulties, or what?
Well, that's still an ongoing issue, in that some of them, they, they bid, and they simply, we can't reach them. The auction company's responsible for, you know, that final step with them of, you know, getting the earnest money and, and handling that. And we've had a couple that were just saying, "I, I, I can't do it after I've done it." Now, we, we knew that upfront, that we were gonna have situations like that, because every county that uses this process does. We do not allow those people to go back and start bidding on another, you know, auction. They're blackballed, if you will, I'm not sure of a better term, but at the moment, there were 10. As of today, there's only seven, I believe, because I got three more contracts from the auction company. So it may be that that dwindles down even further, and those people are just trying to get their ducks in a row, if you will.
What I'm talking about is, I go buy a little double-wide every day, and he had a forfeit sign out front. And I slowed down one, and asked the guy who bought it. He said they couldn't sell it because the guy's got lawyers or something, and took it off to market.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, it's, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, if, if that did happen. I'm just telling you what he told me.
Okay.
But more than likely, it was just, you know, not bid, but he couldn't buy it.
Right. And, and/or, at this moment, since the auction has just been completed, I think the 24th was the date, we're still going through this. And this being the first time we've done it, you know, it's, it's been somewhat of a learning curve for me with the auction company, but it's, it seems to be going very smoothly.
Mr. Bell?
As, as you know, you and I probably talked several times concerning the Forfeited Land Commission, but I want, but, but what you, what you did to get the buyers out of the Forfeited Land Commission, I tell you what, this council and the county need to compliment you on it. Because, because when, when I got on council, Mr. Taylor can tell you, one of the first things that bothered me was how the Forfeited Land Commission was handling the property. They were sending out letters to various people so they could go buy the land. There were, some people were getting rent from property that was already in the Forfeited Land Commission. It was a disaster, and everybody in this county knew it. So again, what you did, trying to straighten this situation out, I tell you what, now we can feel proud of where we at, and, and then the road we need to continue on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank Mr. Taylor for acknowledging the fact, he actually found, found the hiccups in there, so, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront and, and working out the legalities with it, so definitely was a plus. A lot of people were satisfied within this county, a lot of people, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir.
And a good thing about this also, not only the $400,000 to $450,000 that we'll get from the sale of the properties, they go back on the tax rolls, and should be generating $25,000, $30,000 a year in taxes going forward.
Definitely. So that was a good find.
It was, and hopefully, again, it puts people, property back in people's hands, they can actually use and do something with. Next up, we wanted to give a report, sorry, Ms. President, next up, we want to give a report on the job fair. I will let Mr. Sam Hodges, who headed that up for us, give council an update. I do think, again, it was also very successful. A number of applications come in, and hopefully can connect our citizens with jobs with some of these new companies we've got coming in. Mr. Hodges?
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for having me tonight. Just kind of wanted to give a brief description of the job fair. Like Jason was saying, it was very successful. September 30th, we held the job fair at Midford Rec Center, Jenkinsville Rec Center, and Winsborough's Rec Center. We had 12 companies participate in this. This is a county-run thing. None of them were onsite except for Pruitt Health. But I'll go through the list of who we had. We had Pruitt Health, Cooperative Health, Pro Pallet, Element, M. Lilly, C. Pro Boats, Isola, Meckler Lang, the SC Highway Patrol, Fairfield County, Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, and the Fairfield County School District all participated in the event. We had upwards of 125 applicants over, across the three locations. On average, folks were filling out three applications when they were there, so I calculated that, is 375 total applications were filled out. And that doesn't even include the online applications, because some of these folks were strictly online applications. I did want to give a special thanks to Laura Johnson, Diana Robinson, and her crew, as well as the Parks and Recreation Team. They did, they were extremely helpful and, and really helped make this thing possible, along with Gene Stevens and the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll just start things out, I'm telling you, that was a, that was a great day. It was nice to see, you know, people lined up at 8:00 AM for a job. You know, little old Fairfield, yes, we have some jobs. I think a report was sent out earlier this week, only 25 applications for unemployment was turned in, so, and that, and that's definitely a plus. That means, that tells you there, people are looking for jobs, the people are trying to go back to work, and we definitely have them available. So, Sam, great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know you worked hard, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and, and didn't you say that, um, Ms., um, Ms. Diana Robinson also contributed to it?
Yes, Diane Robinson and her whole team were, were pivotal in making this thing happen.
I said that since Chairman Robinson probably wasn't there.
Thank you, sir. Does any, other council member has any comments or questions for Mr. Hodges?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I think this probably should be something annual we do, you know?
I would agree.
Because of the, because of the response, it was greatly needed. I saw people I hadn't seen in a long time in line for a job, so. We look forward to going even higher next year, so.
Mr. Chair, though, please don't limit it to annually, please, let's talk about it as needed, so, because if, if we get more opportunities.
Awesome.
If we need, let's do it.
Sounds good, Mr. Bell, sounds good. I could, I can go with that. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And like I said, keep, please keep up the good work, you guys are doing an awesome job.
Next, just our, our standard COVID update. I will let Ms. Johnson go over that. I think some council member, or you may have seen, I know I got comments from some council members about the facial, the kind of iPad-type thermometers that we have at the doors now. We're trying to look and prepare for kind of a soft opening as the public comes back, but, but again, making sure that we're safe in doing that. Ms. Johnson?
Well, all over the state, the numbers haven't been as high as they used to be, so as of today, we had reported only two cases. And as Mr. Taylor stated, the county opened its doors on the 5th of this month. Buildings have notices put on them requesting everyone to wear a mask and to still practice social distancing. With exception of the courthouse, it is mandatory, the Supreme Court of South Carolina issued an order requiring face masks and temperature checks.
Excellent, excellent.
So we have, we have a person at the door, at the courthouse, so when someone enters in, we make sure they have on a mask. If they do not have a mask, we have a box there, so they can get a mask. And also, we purchased a, a temperature machine. You just walk up to it, and it tells you what your temperature is, and it says, "Accepted", and then they're allowed in.
Is that information kept in a database? Just curious.
Oh, no, I'm not sure.
Post-to-be, or again, contract tracing.
Yeah.
So that's one of the benefits of those.
I was just curious whether it kept in a database, and, you know, if they come back and say, eh, you know?
We just started using it.
Okay.
And one thing we did realize when we were at the courthouse, you know, if you have your, your hat on and it's down this low, it just says, "Get closer", we can't read it, so we've actually had to ask some people to kind of, "Take your hat off, please", but it can still read it.
Okay.
With a mask and a hat on, if it's not too low. So we have one in this building, we have one at the courthouse transit, because they have a CARES grant, they actually purchased one as well.
I would expect this is gonna be the new norm for a long time.
I think it will.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Anything further from council?
Are you in?
Mr. Bell?
Not about COVID, but I do have a couple of questions.
In reference to, oh, you, you want to ask during council time, or?
Yeah, I can ask during council time.
All right.
Well, there is no clerk of the council's report, now down to our council time. Mr. Bell?
Okay, I got a, a question, and I, I really don't know how to ask this, other than, I thought, because I, I like Mr. Brad Douglas, you know, he, he's done a really good job in the Sheriff's Department, but I was thinking we was gonna use Mr. Pope for that position.
We had, well, in looking at that, Mr. Pope had asked that we reorganize that department potentially, and put not necessarily him doing that job, but that job under him. So no, it was never gonna be a situation where Mr. Pope was actually gonna be doing the job. It was potentially looking at how other counties are organized, and some have that position under Mr., what would be Mr. Pope's position.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking that we was gonna probably eliminate that position some kind of way. I guess evidently.
No, that wasn't the concept. The concept, again, Mr. Pope had looked at, and he had presented to us how other counties do it, and we had looked at that option.
Okay. And the, and the next question is, we, we got the financial quarter reports that was given to us, I guess it was on our, on our desk, but, but one of the things that got on here is, for the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce, we pay, we pay salary in the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce?
We give them a, in the Chamber of Commerce, they does, they do receive an allocation from tourism funds.
And it depends on how?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm asking that, I'm, I'm, what I'm asking is, is that, is that for their salaries?
Not all of it.
No, I mean, but we saying, we, we allocate $52,504 for the salary of the Chamber of Commerce.
They can use their allocation.
They can, but that...
Yes, they can.
So this goes back to another question I asked last time, then.
Let, let me, let me, let me clarify one thing, his salary is not $52,000?
I don't think so.
Oh, I, I'm not worried about how much it is. You know, people, the amount, people get, that's not, but is, so, is this person also getting, can they get state retirement system and all that stuff?
He gets nothing but the salary, not even health benefits.
Okay. But again, are we saying that we are paying, or we are allocating fifty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars for the salary of people at the Chamber of Commerce?
We allocate them funds for operations, whether they use that for.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Salary, that, that's up to them.
Yeah, but I want to make sure it's being allocated for their salary. And you saying yes?
We allocate funds to it.
We allocate the funds.
We, you don't, we don't set their.
We don't, we don't run that. We just allocate funds. Uh, the, uh, town allocates funds also. I think they do use the majority of the town's funds for programs.
That's true.
I think they use the majority of ours for salary. But we just allocate, we had a, a flat rate.
County one for allocates and Fairfield County.
I, I, I understand. I understand.
What are you getting at, Mr. Bell?
Uh-uh, I'm just asking a question.
You through?
Yes, sir.
Just the job that, uh, Brad got, is it a job created or is it?
No.
Just, it's not making a new salary. He's just going to take over that job to someone else.
Just Phyllis Watkins had had that position.
I want to clear it up. Okay? Anything?
But, but, um, I, I, I understand Mr. Douglas' question, but, um, I was just asking the question because based on our conversation in the past, I thought we, we might would just use that as an opportunity, but I might have misunderstood what you were saying. So, um, I'm not saying.
Quite often.
I was thinking we was going to use that opportunity to eliminate a, a, a staff position and combine some assignments.
And, and Councilman Bell, you're, you're correct. Anytime an opening comes, we always examine it. We look at it and say, is there a more efficient way we can do this? But with this one, it wasn't that we were looking to eliminate. We were looking to see if there was some value to adding two departments together, but not, we weren't looking to eliminate the position itself.
Anything further from council? Yes, sir. It's council, council time. Mr. Paul?
I just wanted to say, um, keep one of our county employees in our prayers, Mr. Keith Brownham. His family is dealing with, um, a lot of stuff right now. So pray, pray for the Brownham family.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Bell?
Paul to mention that is, is, um, someone, um, at, at the, at the, at the, um, courthouse have been sick with?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know you can't talk about it, but how they doing?
Lauren, do you know? I know they're in the hospital.
I didn't call them names. They, um, actually last week, they, they were put in the hospital.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Goins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and good evening to everyone that I did not speak to when we first started. And I'm just so excited because we have so many good things going on. I want to first mention that, uh, Ms. Delores Patterson in Jenkinsville on Twitch the Drain, she wanted to specifically say thank you for the food share box. She wanted to make sure that everybody that participated in that program knows that she really appreciated. And not only her, so many people said thank you and they look forward to it. It was a big one. And I want to thank you all, and especially Ms. Lauren Johnson and her team for the hard work of keeping that together and, um, making the connection. And I know it takes a lot to do that, but we do appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I have, um, I just want to ask, I have a request, um, for this area for a question, if I feel about to say District Four, because most of it isn't District Four, but, um, I have a request for recreation expansion at Big Monticello, some of the southeast area, Greenbriar, Montedale, and I'm asking the administrative team, along with the help of Dominion, if they will consider, um, clearing and extending an area at the, to the swim side of the lake at Monticello, at Big Monticello, to include a basketball court and possibly a one-mile walking track and, um, and, uh, some playground equipment, if possible. I'd like to see that happen. Also, if we can upgrade all of the lake area to make it more community and tours attractive. I, I hear what's happening at Lake Waterine. I'm just thrilled. I could get a chance to go out and, and get a tour. And what we're doing at IJX seven and the Patrana Trail, and our, our county is just growing. It's just thriving, and I'm excited about that. So let's bring everything together. And Parks and Recreation, they do a fantastic job. So let's see if there's anything that we can do to help with that. Also, over on the left side of that lake area in the northeast area, there's a space over there. And we're talking about the land over there, the, um, uh, six, eight acres or something. Anyway, there's some space over there. And several people have mentioned that people go fishing a lot. So I appreciate it if we could clear out an area to make it more accessible. And again, if Dominion, we thought it's Dominion because it is their property, and will, for many will allow to put in a dock maybe, and, uh, maybe some granite stones and steps and, and seating, and just make it a nice little fishing spot for the community and visitors. You know, just, it's kind of upgrading and enhanced. And I spoke with a person in the Greenbriar, Montedale area, and, um, they were asking for an area over there, Keyhole and certain areas, if they could do, get something in that area to help out. And I told them, I said, maybe if someone would donate an acre or so of land, and we have the equipment and we have in-house manpower, then maybe we could clean it up and get it graded and everything, and put a basketball court in that area, and maybe a mile walking track in that area.
Inside.
You know, and just to kind of, kind of build it up some and, and clean it up. And, you know, to give people something to be motivated about and by their community. And when I say a mile, uh, track, because you don't have to have a whole long big area. So if you walk a mile, you do it five times, you did five miles. So you don't need a whole lot of space. Just design, and you can design it however. And, uh, another part I have on the community development, um, I'm asking administrative team to look into purchasing a portion of property in Western Fairfield, something that is very, um, uh, viable and conducive to the community development where we're going now, where we're headed to. And not just anywhere, because it's Western Fairfield, and maybe we don't have nothing. I want just anything, but something that is, is very useful and is not permitted one, not interested in. So much of my community asking about this, don't get excited because some, don't even approach people that's stupid divine and talking. Look, look to somebody that's interested in improving their community and the county. And, and again, we have that in-house equipment. We can do so many things. We have manpower. So these are just small things that I'm asking. And we can clear it off and make it site ready for lease or rental. Or maybe we could start doing a start shell. And, uh, it'd be completed to fit by the lease the other renter. And, um, the same we do with main sites, but on a much smaller scale, you know, something like that. And, um, and.
Oh, man.
These things that could really happen now. Everybody's been talking about Western Fairfield. They don't do anything on the western side, all of this. So now we will see just how much support, this enhanced request of half to better the community. And I find out if there are talk or will talk, our future is in front of us. And with every generation, God gives opportunity to better than before. And we are not to live in the past. We will be, we, we, a future is to keep, we all ways should be moving forward. So it's not about this one person. It's all about all of us. And the county is moving in a great direction. We've been so blessed to recover. And it wasn't because we did this thing so fantastic, the mercy and grace that got us to this point. We're down, God saved us, He held us, He kept us, and now He is restoring us. And I'm not trying to compete with anybody. I'm not trying to please everybody, nor would I be ashamed of my faith. But God has sustained His people in this county, and He is restoring us in a good way. I want to take, don't take it for granted. The wastewater treatment plant is a must for this, for the survival of this.
Dinner time.
The point of life, it is a must.
God breaches this.
And I'm not.
She's.
Voting, uh, telling nobody how to vote or whatever. But I told someone, I said, they, they were talking about bringing people in and, uh, the taxes. I said, you go other places and you spend taxes and you build other counties. Build your own home. It starts at home first. We are sharing that all we do on, from one place to other. People come in and they share and buy and share with us. We go places and we share with other people, and we all build. You go other places and we admire what they have. The same way we helped them get it, the next them helped us get it. But the wastewater treatment plant is, that has to be the foundation for all of this. And just want to say vastly, everything that I can do to help all the people in this county, I, it's what I'm going to do. That, that's what I've been placed here for. That's what we've all been placed here for, to do good toward one another. And when we don't do that, we not only fail the people, we fail ourselves because we haven't done everything we're supposed to do. And I'm not so arrogant to demand anything from the administrator, from the chairman, from the council. I'm not that arrogant. But I believe this is a doable, useful, and inexpensive project request. So I humbly and proudly ask the administrative team to please move forward for this as soon as possible. And I humbly and proudly ask those that will of council to encourage and support it for the good of the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goins. Any other council member like to be recognized? If not, I'll just, uh, close by. I think our next meeting is not going to be till after the election. Um, I wish everyone luck. Uh, of course, whether I'm on council or not, I think this council is, uh, heading in the right direction. As they say, Rome wasn't built in one night, and we definitely are not going to be able to do it in one, one year. So, uh, stay the course and have faith. Um, that's all I've got. Ms. Bertha and, uh, Michael, we're gonna have executive session in here. If you guys could stay on, if, if you don't mind. Okay. If nothing further from council, we'll go ahead and, uh, we do have one item for executive session.
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session.
I second.
So, let me just read off. It's for litigation and receipt of a legal advice and discussion regarding pending litigation pursuant to South Carolina Section Code, uh, thirty dash four dash seventy, uh, subsection A, paragraph two. Uh, this motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now enter into executive session. We are now enter into executive session.